With our family and friends that we continue and carry that through the we'll go the Hanukkah, Christmas, New Year sesh, uh, weeks ahead and learn from any possible uh, lapses in judgment that we may have all experienced during Thanksgiving. Um, did we, we didn't receive anything public forum wise, any messages? Okay. We'll go right on to the administrative reports. Um, let's start with Heidi.
Uh, just a couple of things to report. Um, we will be having a student teacher. You received a memo from me for Heather Sweeney for agriculture starting in January. Um, I also did a summary for the extracurricular. So it's just a brief summary of the follow-up from the last meeting. And I think that's all I have to report. Obviously, we're working through this new remote for until January. Teachers are working hard and trying to connect with kids, keeping kids up to date in their lessons.
Okay. Any questions for Heidi? Okay. Uh, Jill, well.
Hi, everybody. Um, first of all, with the middle school, I'd like to report that on December 2nd, we had 14 students inducted into the National Junior Honor Society. Obviously, we couldn't have our induction ceremony how we normally would. So we had our first virtual induction ceremony. Um, Mr. Cotton and Ms. Allen did a great job planning and organizing that. And I just wanted to thank the technology department as well for helping us put that together through our live stream slash Google Meet. So thank you and congratulations to our inductees. Also, our new home and family and consumer science um, teacher, Kim Corrigan, she applied and she was a recipient of a $500 grant through the Rome Teachers Federal Credit Union. So what she's going to do is she's incorporated a STEAM activity into a sewing project. So they're going to sew like the circuit into a project of their own design. And then it kind of lights up. And so once we have final products of that, I will let you guys see and show a picture of them. So congratulations to her for that initiative. And also, um, just to give you guys an update too, with all the changes um, and some of the um, recent things, I'd like to give you our numbers. So we went from like 53 um, full remote students now to it was like up to 60. Oh, no, it was like, sorry, about 63 and it was, it went up from 54. So and then obviously, when we just had the shutdown with the closure right now or the fully remote. And um, also, I just want to shout out to our teachers. They're doing an amazing job, going above and beyond and really reaching out to all the students and trying to get them to participate. So they're doing a wonderful job. We know it's a lot on them, but they're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda, hope you're feeling better.
I have to find my unmute button.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike. I've said I, I, in a, in a normal world, I probably have just a rotten cold. But you know, with what we're living with, I'd rather be safe than sorry. So waiting on some results. Um, basically at West Leiden, uh, we also saw an increase of remote students. We were holding at 12 pretty much from the beginning of the year. And just the week after Thanksgiving alone, we saw a jump up to 18. Most parents had expressed a concern about um, or a, a desire to stay remote at least through the New Year, um, to avoid that holiday exposure. And of course, now with our full shutdown, um, they're probably feeling like they made that right decision. With the full shutdown, I think because December is such a festive time in an elementary school, we're going to try to keep some things alive with remote or virtual spirit days, um, red and green days and ugly sweater days and just try to encourage kids and families to post pictures, send us emails, send us texts, um, share it. You know, we can share on Parent Square, um, posting in Google Classroom, you know, whatever we can to kind of encourage that participation because kids are really, it's a, it's sad that they're not in school during the Christmas holiday, but we certainly understand the reasons why. Um, we were also going to try to organize a food drive for the veterans over December. And Thursday, I have a faculty meeting. And I'll explore some ideas with the West Leiden staff to maybe continue those efforts, whether it's just, um, you know, faculty that kind of drives that train or I'm thinking perhaps some collection boxes by the main office that we can check during the day. Um, kind of just keep those efforts alive even in a virtual world. So that's about it at West Leiden.
Thank you. Jill Schaefer.
Hi. So Boonville is going to do some similar things to West Leiden to keep that holiday spirit, keep that, the joy of um, the season going with the kids. But also for the teachers to kind of give us something positive to work through. Um, we're also doing a virtual spirit week. Uh, it was going to be an in-person spirit week, but now it's going to be virtual. So we'll be asking the kids to join their Google meets dressed in their ugly sweaters, their pajamas, their crazy holiday accessories and um, the classic Christmas pajama day. And um, so we'll be doing that. We're also doing a building-wide snowman decorating contest to decorate our hallways. So those went home for family engagement activity. So I, I think maybe some of them coming back will probably be pretty spotty. But what I think we're going to do is ask folks to maybe send us a picture or an email of it. And we'll find a way to celebrate it and keep that contest going. We are going to give away some prizes to everybody that enters. We'll just pick it random. Uh, but we wanted to liven up the hallways a little bit and we thought that might be a fun way to do it. Um, before the, this um, long-term remote closure, um, we were hovering around 45 to 50 remote students. We started to have um, an increase of folks coming back to, um, back to hybrid learning and our remote numbers were going down. Um, but when we came back from Thanksgiving, we definitely saw that stop and then shift the other way. Uh, we've also had some new students join us. So I would say right around now, we're um, about 55 remote students out of our 402 enrolled. So that's kind of been about normal for us. Our high was 68. So this isn't too bad. Um, I'm, I have to say, and I, I know Jill and Heidi and everybody else have mentioned it, but I am so pleased and so proud of our teachers for what they've been doing um, with all of the challenges that they have been facing. And you know, they got textbooks ready to go yesterday if anybody wanted it at home or it was just, it's wonderful. And as a parent in the district, I too was home, well, I was homesick yesterday. Um, just being cautious and I had the opportunity to see my kindergarten and second grade student uh, go through a day of virtual learning. And I applaud the parents that are doing it at home every day because it was kind of chaos here. Um, but I was able to see some of the teachers um, and see my kids interact with them. And those teachers did not miss a beat. And my kids were engaged. And so as a parent, I'm very happy. And as a, as a principal, I'm very happy with everything that our teachers have been doing and communicating with families. The world of technology is in um, transition between Christie and I right now. Um, so I know I wasn't able to be here last month. Um, but I would have shared with you that we had that um, hotspot delivery and that we were able to get everybody off of the waitlist at that time. Um, we are rechecking numbers right now to make sure that everybody is covered. But very pleased with the number of hotspots that have gone out for the students that have requested them. I think we're in a very good spot for that. Um, and then technology, the teachers are rocking and rolling with all the crazy things that were thrown at them. And a lot of them have been experimenting with extended screen from their Chromebook to another screen so that they can see their Google Meet, but also see what they're sharing and toggling back and forth. And they're trying it and they're doing a really great job. So kudos to them and kudos to the, the lunch staff and the custodians because everybody's chipping in right now. So that's me.
Thank you very much and hope you're feeling better too. Um, our newest administrator, welcome aboard. Um, I'll let you say.
Thank you.
I see that you have a report that you sent out to us.
I do. So I have just some quick updates. Um, so today was my seventh day on the job. So um, just kind of a, a crash course anytime you're getting started with kind of the, learning the layout, connecting with people, getting settled in. Um, but some of the things that we have done over this past week, um, I did create a Google Classroom for technology curriculum and instruction um, to try to be a hub resource and a way to communicate with the whole district. Um, I also did put a survey out through that, um, that is due on Friday um, to get a little bit of information back from um, all of the faculty to help guide next steps in those three areas of curriculum instruction and technology. Um, I've met with all the administrators and we all have big, you know, long to-do list to kind of chisel away at to, you know, make sure that my efforts are supporting their, their biggest needs. And obviously, number one on everyone's minds and, and needs right now is any help with COVID planning. Um, so I um, really didn't create any of the COVID plans that the district has. Um, but I have over the past week, um, met with the different principals. They've been working for weeks with their teachers, but just consolidated the COVID plan um, so that we can add a little bit more detail to our district plan. So whenever you are ready for us, um, we have a very short presentation we can do just to update you on what that document is.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, did I see Dan?
Hi, uh, just uh, in whatever world of sports is left, um, the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, um, postponed high-risk sports till January 4th, but there, it's just a date out in the cloud because there's no actual start date as of yet for high-risk sports. Um, section three moved uh, what we have for Nordic ski to uh, December 14th on Monday. And the Center Conference League, which we're in, has moved bowling till January 4th as a start date. And all that is a little moot only because we went all hybrid, uh, excuse me, all remote. So all sports is on hold until we get back into a hybrid mode. Uh, which kind of throws everything into a loop because so many districts went remote. Um, so we've got an A D meeting tomorrow. We'll kind of most likely do a tally and see how many districts are remote or planning on going remote to see. Um, there's a good likelihood if sports takes place, it, it might not even start until mid to late January, um, depending on how many districts are left right now. So like, like I said, I'll, I'll probably know more after tomorrow. And uh, if anybody, you know, the junior colleges have just made an announcement that they canceled high-risk sports. So I don't know if high school sports will come next for high-risk sports. So they'll be probably keeping an eye out for that. But that's all I have the news on sports for right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Brian. Is Brian on there? Yes. Oh, Brian, you're muted. Oh, there we go.
There we go. Sorry about that. No one at work. Uh, yes, good evening. Uh, well, good news. We have all of our drivers back. Well, one will be back hopefully uh, in a week or two. So that's very good news for us. Keep our fingers crossed that everyone stays healthy. Uh, as we know, it's a very trying time for the district with uh, transportation. And now that we're going full remote, been working with Sharon and Sandy the last couple of days to start our full delivery, which will start tomorrow. So we'll run every Wednesday and Thursday uh, until further notice. And we're also getting ready for winter. Our buses are all getting their fronts on to help with the radiator and the tire changeover and speaking with the drivers on how to best handle winter roads. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is Cameron on? I don't think so. Okay. Uh, let's see. Have I missed any administrators? No. And Wendy's not here. Okay. This time, we will move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion for one and two. Okay, so on my screen, I have just administrators and no board members. Oh, okay, now I have Mandy. Was there a, a motion?
For one and two, motion.
Doug, motion. Mandy, second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Carried? Three, uh, the tenure recommendation for Mrs. Jessica Swodowski in the tenure area of elementary education. Uh, this award will be effective January 22nd to 2020. Is there a motion?
Motion. Um, I see.
Motion by Rick? Is there a second? Mandy?
Yes.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Um, four is the recommendation to declare equipment and/or textbooks within the district as surplus to be disposed of. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
By Mark. Is there a second? Doug, this is like one of those uh, tests at the, and I, and I flunked that test.
You were going to say so.
Uh, any discussion on the surplus equipment or books? All in favor? All these thumbs. All opposed? Carried? Um, five is a recommendation committee on special education placement of students. Is there a motion? Bruce, all in, uh, is there a second? Mandy? Any discussion? All in, yep?
My only question is, how is the fully remote um, model in terms of affecting the placement of students for special? Or is it?
Uh, the question was, how is going fully remote affecting our special education placements? Is that basically the?
Right.
They've got to be impacted. We know that. Wendy isn't here, number two. I'm going to put Rick on the spot for a second because you're closest to this.
Sure. Well, um, do you want to ask me a question or you want me to tell my opinion?
Uh, let's.
I do. Unfortunately, I have to go. I have a, I'll write back. I'll be back.
Okay, yeah. We um, we will forward this question on to Wendy and she will get back to all of us as a board. Okay, Mandy?
Well, Mandy, I know that, you know, they're following their schedules and they're also receiving their services with timed opens for schedule. So all of the teachers have set the schedules to their student. Um, I'm not on, so I mean.
And I could just add a little bit to that. Um, when we talk a little bit about our 100 remote plan, our elementary, um, on their cohort day, our elementary students join their classroom teachers for, um, typically it's ELA and math for live Google meets every day. And um, one suggestion or one idea would be that those times, like for ELA at K through fifth would all be the same time. So it was consistent and clear. And the math time, you know, maybe ELA would be nine o'clock, math would be 11 o'clock, and that would be the easiest for everyone. But the biggest reason we didn't go with that model and we allowed our elementary teachers to pick their Google meet times to match their current classroom times is because that would completely disrupt how our specials were offered, how our special education was offered and how our AIS was offered. So when um, we look at that document, you will see that each classroom teacher has set Google meet times, but they're all different. And the, the reason for that is to make sure we still could accommodate our special education services and AIS services and special schedule. That was the only way to really be able to do that. So that's at the elementary level. And then at sixth through 12th grade, the students follow on their cohort days their regular schedule. So if they had resource room or they had a special ed service, they would follow that remotely just as if they were live and in person.
Does that help out, Mandy?
It's going to reverberate and I'm sorry. Um, yeah, I'm just, because we're approving for placement of students, but if they're not in buildings, I just wanted to make sure we're approving something that's able to occur, I guess. I don't know.
We will still, I mean, that was a good explanation, Christie. We're still going to forward it to Wendy uh, if she wants to add to that. Um, so on number five, there's been a motion in second. All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Six included is the Board of Education needs to approve the 2021-22 budget development calendar. Is there a motion? Bruce, is there a second? Mark? Uh, any comments, questions? Is his, okay.
I'm going to try this again.
Is it me? Try it again, Bruce.
Okay. So um, my question is, can we add milestones for revenues? And so right now, we talk, we're on our calendar, we're talking about portions of the budget and when they'll be presented. Can we also add in there when we expect to see the revenue side of the equation? Um, and then ideally, I'd like to see a full budget presentation by January 26th, if, if at all possible. Because the way that this reads now, the full budget is being presented the same night we have to vote on it.
I don't have it in. Yeah, it's part of the agenda. Hang on, Bruce.
I think this year more than ever, you know, pictures of revenue are going to be key to uh, to our decisions.
Well, you've got.
I guess my question is, with January 26th?
The calendar?
I mean, because the other one is March. I don't know.
You approve it in March, yeah, the March. We talked about each section. Full bud, first full budget is in February. And revenues are always before because state aid runs out at the end of January. Yeah. Distribution of budget on February, distribution of budget on February 9th is a full budget. That includes revenues.
So February 9th, according to that, is the present, uh?
Distribution of budget, which is a full budget. That's a full budget. That's a full budget.
Yeah, you discuss each section of it. When we, each portion of this.
I discuss, I discuss each portion in depth in those, at those meetings. However, a full budget is given to the board on February 9th with corresponding revenues because the state aid runs come out at the end of January.
I'm good with that, Mike. I'm good with February 9th.
You got me?
You heard that?
Yeah. I'm good with February 9th. Uh, Sharon, what are your thoughts on, uh, giving us a snapshot of revenues periodically? Because like I say, I think that's gonna be a very key element to this year's budget.
Yeah, we do, um, we do revenues. The state aid runs come out at the end of January. So we will do the other revenues before that, but obviously, state aid runs are the majority of them. So February, you get the full gamut of that. I can do, I can do all the other ones because there isn't really a lot to them, but we won't get, we won't get runs until the end of January. But you do get a full budget with revenues in February.
But then periodically, there's updates to those revenues, correct?
For the following fiscal year?
Uh, no, don't we, don't we get a, an update for the governor's proposal? And then there's, uh, during the budget cycle to the revenues?
So governor's proposal will come out in January. Then traditionally, yes, there are modifications, but traditionally, I go over those modifications with the board as they come out. Then legislative budget comes out at the end of March if they have a state-approved budget. But yes, every time there is a modification, I do bring that back to the board. Is that your question?
Yeah. But it's not like, it's not like on a calendar that this is when these are gonna take place?
No, because we don't know when they're gonna take place.
Okay.
You got it down there.
Thanks, Sharon.
Did we get a motion in second on that? We must have if there were questions. Any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Seven, uh, resolve that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approved the budget transfers for November 2020. Motion by Bruce, is there a second? Doug? Any questions on the trans, any of the transfers? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. And Michelle, you, Rick went off and now he's back.
Yeah.
Got him, okay. Eight is, uh, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but this is on the authorization, authorizing the participation of Cooperative Energy Purchasing Service for Natural Gas. Is there a motion? Oh, there it is. Mark, is there a second? Mandy, any discussion? Thank you for providing the, the information to us. Uh, hearing none, seeing, uh, no questions. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Also included in our packet, um, the first reading of records management and child abuse and maltreatment.
Mike, I'll make a motion to approve both of those.
There's a motion to approve both the new policies. There's a second by Mark. Any discussion? Any input from the policy committee?
No, Mark's fine.
Opposed? Carried. Uh, included are the various warrants in the packet, uh, the various receipts for this period. Treasurers' report for October 2020. Uh, also included enrollment for, as of December 1st, district calendar for December 2020, and the claims auditors' report for November. Any other questions?
Mike, on the Treasurers' report?
Yep.
There's some checks that go back to 2019 that have not been cashed yet. And then there's some, there's a decent amount, depending on which checkbook they get written from, that go back to the spring or very early summer of 2020. Do we have, what's our procedure on closing out those checks or contacting those people? Like, some of them are, they may be related to refereeing or umpiring games, I'm suspecting. But then there's something to the ATA.
We have to contact them and reissue them. We can't just write them off. But some of those officials are hard to locate, so that's traditionally an issue. But I can have them look at that again.
Okay.
Normally, when there are people who know, it's easier to tell them to go cash the checks, but when it's that type of a person, they're harder to find.
So do you go through their association or?
I can't hear.
Repeat that, Bruce.
So do, do you, do you try to contact the, uh, the association if they're officials or?
Yeah, we can, we do, or we try to find them personally, yes.
Gotcha. So at what point, what's the, what's the magic number? Is it six months or three months? Does our check say something on it that after X number of days, it's void?
Um, the last time I knew, we have to turn it over to the state because it's, it's like a found money type deal.
Gotcha.
But I will check into that as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, so I apologize that before, can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
I apologize that before I had to go, I had a doctor's appointment at 4:00 P.M. today, but with everything developing like it has, it became a 5:00 to 7:00 P.M. phone call from the doctor instead. And of course, they called during the middle of the meeting. I wanted to express my concerns, um, again, as a parent of a special needs child, and I know I've done this before with the board and to many of you personally. I know that most of the board or all the board really wants students in school. We'd love to have schools open right now, but we would love to have them open not being hybrid, but just full-time, all the students in the class all day. But we can't do that right now due to, um, the COVID restrictions and due to what's happening right now. Um, my concern specifically is for students like my son that are in a 12-1-3-1 class or another supported services class. I know that Rome School, um, has gone remote, but the kids that are, the students that are in the supported needs classes still go to school. They're bussed in, they meet with their special ed teachers and with their aides, and they have a somewhat normal school day, even though the school is on a remote schedule. Some schools are not providing anything really for their special ed kids during remote time. And I know right now, from what I've heard, our stance is in Adirondack, that the therapists and the teachers will do Google meets or Zooms with the students. Um, now, I would like to tell you that in the spring, my son, um, went to every Zoom or Google meet that was offered. My wife or I are both were with him. And only one other student out of his class ever came to one at all. The rest didn't, never came to one. And that's with parents, we knew everyone was at home, but they weren't able to even do that. And I know now, my son's not gonna be able to go because he's had a babysitter and we both have to work. And the babysitter has six toddlers and infants, other than Ray. Now, she definitely can't be responsible to do Zoom meetings and Google calls or anything else with him. Um, and when we tried to do physical therapy with Raymond at home, we're not physical therapists and we are afraid we're hurting him and we don't push him the same way. We don't have the adaptive equipment. Uh, my son almost lost his ability to walk over the six months when we were home before. And now we have another six weeks where potentially he gets no therapy, no education. Now, I'm speaking for him and the kids with the extreme needs, but I'd also like to say that we should do something or really need to do something for all the kids with special needs that have IEPs, that have requirements that should be being met. Um, and frankly, I don't care if the state gives us a pass, we still need to do this. So I think some of the aides that are being possibly furloughed should be possibly kept on staff to work with the kids. Um, I think some of the classrooms should be open. I think some of the stuff should be still available for students, even though we're on full remote learning. Um, I don't think it should be a black and white thing. And I know that, um, Bruce was always on board with getting the primary grades back because like a kindergarten, first, second grader, they can't learn when they're not in school. It's very difficult. And like with my son, he's the mentality of a two to three-year-old, so obviously, he can't learn anything without being right at school. So my, my plea to the board and to the administrators is to do anything we can to help the special needs kids. Um, I just think that they're missing out more than anyone else right now. I know that there's a lot of talk about seniors missing out. These kids, to me, are gonna be okay. You know, a senior in high school, they're gonna be all right if they don't have prom. But the special ed kids, if they, they, my, my son hasn't had a summer off since he started school because they're afraid of the regression he'll have over the summer. He goes to summer school every summer. But now COVID, he can have six months, eight months with no education, no therapy. It's just literally, it's quality of life. So I'm, I'm gonna stop for now and see if anyone else has any comments because I could go on and just, I don't want it to be like me complaining or crying, but like, just anything we can do to help the special needs students, please, um, let's try to help them.
Any comments? Thank you, first of all, for getting back on and, and sharing that with us. Any comments at this point? Okay. Uh, at this time, I will, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for a couple of personnel issues. Is there a motion? Mark, is there a second? Doug? It's like that clicker in, in Dr. Vincy's office. I fail that. Uh, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you all for getting on the meet tonight, and, uh, if we don't hear or see you before the holidays, uh, have a healthy and merry Christmas and New Year, and, uh, please stay healthy. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.